Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the adjourned regular meeting of the Laguna Woods City Council on Wednesday, October 25, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Hatch?
Aye.
Mayor Connors? Here. Councilmember Moore?
Would everyone please stand and join as we, if you, as you may, and join in the presence allegiance to our flag which offers us the opportunity, which is an outstanding thing to have. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one ceremonial matter, well, one presentation, which has to do with capital improvements in our quarterly report, and I will turn it over to our city manager for that presentation.
Did you potentially want to take public comments on the closed session item at this point, or did you want to hold that for the end?
Would you like to sit through our discussion of capital improvements, or would you like to speak now and get on your way?
It's entirely up to you.
Why don't you come on up? We'll be glad to hear you now. I know that your time is valuable.
As is yours. And I appreciate the opportunity. All right. Good afternoon again. As you may recall, my name is Catherine Weinberg, and I am an attorney representing Coleman Inc. and Foodline Inc., the owners of the property at 24365 El Toro Road in Laguna Woods, as well as individuals Robert Louis Porter, Gloria Jean Porter, and Mary Louise Furia, who have been named in a nuisance abatement lawsuit filed on behalf of the city of Laguna Woods. When here last week, we went through the underlying issues, including the fact that the elderly officers, two who are in their 90s and one in her late 80s, of the corporate owners of the property, had no knowledge of tenant's intent to operate an illegal marijuana dispensary. In fact, the lease specifically prohibited the sale of any drugs, legal or illegal, and prohibited any sale of any product containing THC. Without the knowledge or consent of landlord, once tenant took possession of the premises under false pretenses, he commenced the operation of an illegal marijuana dispensary. As soon as the landlord was informed that that was what was happening, my office was contacted to immediately take the steps necessary to stop the illegal use and evict the tenant. A little bit about the law with respect to unlawful detainers. Once a tenant is in possession of a property pursuant to a lease, even when the tenant is violating the terms of the lease, even when the tenant is engaging in the illegal use of the premises, the law prohibits self-help. In other words, the landlord cannot, on its own, without a court order, enter the premises to do anything to interfere with the tenant's use, even when the tenant's use is illegal. Now, I have had cases in which a local police department will raid the space and seize the inventory, and sometimes that helps expedite the cessation of the illegal use. But it's my understanding that here, the local sheriff's department, who had jurisdiction, declined to take such action. That is something neither the landlord nor the city attorneys, who we remained in contact with throughout the unlawful detainer process, had any ability to control. In order to evict a tenant, a landlord has to follow some very strict rules, as far as giving notice to the tenant and having them have time to respond, then filing a complaint for unlawful detainer, and going through the legal proceedings necessary to get a court order for the eviction of the tenant. A court must order the eviction, after which time a writ of possession is issued. Then it is up to the sheriff to schedule the eviction and perform the lockout, which in this case took three weeks. Again, something landlord had no ability to control, as the sheriff's department does their own scheduling of when they do lockouts. We did everything we could to get the illegal use stopped and the tenant out of the space as soon as possible within the legal confines of what we had to do. And we were successful. The lockout took place over a month ago. There is no continuing illegal activity to enjoin. My clients were victims of this tenant, who made false representations about his intent for use of the premises, signed a lease specifically prohibiting him from doing what he then proceeded to do, and caused my client to incur substantial damages in the form of legal fees and costs in the unlawful detainer to get the tenant out, as well as cost to repair the damage done to the suite by the now-former tenant. Please don't penalize the victims. If you want to pursue Mr. Fayaxasing for his illegal activity in the city, by all means do so, but don't penalize my clients, who are his victims. On behalf of my elderly clients, who rely on income from this center for their support, we again respectfully request that the nuisance lawsuit be dismissed as to my clients, and the citations issued for the tenant's violations be waived as to my client. Thank you for your time, and I am here available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Turn on your mic.
Do you know if your clients did any background checking on the prospective tenant?
They did the normal, they reviewed what he had given them and his experience, you know, his business experience, as well as financial wherewithal. I don't know that a criminal background check was done, but I'm also unaware of whether he has a criminal record. The fact that he engaged in illegal activity doesn't necessarily mean that he had a criminal record. And trying to get that information can be rather challenging.
Okay. And he still wouldn't have a criminal record, would he, if he's been evicted civilly?
As far as I know.
As far as we know.
I don't know that he has faced any criminal prosecution.
All right.
And that's something, obviously, that's not within my ability to do either. I'm a civil attorney.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I guess I had a question also, because if he did a background check about his other businesses, and they seemed appropriate?
He apparently had one other business that was represented as a perfectly legal business, selling face creams and pet products. And it was not a dispensary, the business that he had-
And you checked that out and saw that he really did sell face creams and products?
I didn't check anything out.
Oh, you just took his word?
No, the property management checked it out.
The property management-
The property management, yes.
Did check it out, and he really did sell the creams?
He was operating a business that sold creams, whether or not he had other business. My understanding is that he may have also had other businesses that he didn't tell them about.
In that same business?
No, in a different location.
Different location.
I believe it was in Riverside. I don't know. That's-
So, I guess I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay.
He stated what his previous businesses were, that he had a background in this, and you checked, you were aware of this other business, and that business proved to be as he portrayed it. Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding with respect to property management, did the investigation.
That's your understanding, but you're not sure?
I did not perform a check.
Okay.
Personally.
Right.
My understanding from property management is they did. And they, you know, obtained the customary information with respect to business experience and assets.
So he had to, he had to present a deposit, I take it, did he not?
He did present a deposit. He, after he made his initial deposit prior to taking possession of the premises, he never made another payment. There was no rent paid during the pendency of this unlawful detainer. He did not make any payments after taking possession.
So, just to make sure, I understand it, he gave you a deposit which was part of the agreement, correct? And he gave that in due time? He didn't give a prepayment of a rent or anything, then?
He, I believe he paid the security deposit and first month's rent.
So he paid the first and last, and a deposit? Is that what you said?
I, no, I believe he just paid the first month's and the deposit, is my understanding.
Okay, so he paid a deposit, which was agreed upon, which may have been based on the rent for the year, I presume. At any rate, he made the deposit, he paid for a month, and then he ceased paying. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you for your help. Your response.
You personally, or your firm, were never involved in these negotiations, were you? You came in after the breach.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I am a litigator. I do primarily unlawful detainers.
Okay.
I evict tenants that are, need to be removed for whatever reason, whether they are not paying rent or illegal use. I've, fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at this, I have had to evict other tenants for illegal use, and therefore able to do it as expeditiously as possible.
So did he provide any, what do I want to call you? People speaking in his behalf. Did he provide any, pardon? References, thank you.
He, I don't recall references. I do know, in the unlawful detainer, he retained counsel. He had an attorney that was seeking to delay the unlawful detainer-
Oh, my.
-and delay the eviction as long as possible.
Right. But back before he takes possession of it, were there any references that one asked for?
That's customary.
Pardon?
That is customary.
It is.
Yes.
So did he provide those?
I can look in the file, but I believe so.
Okay, and so you referred to those and may have followed up on them, or not you personally, because obviously you're later entered into this. The, that was, the references weren't just something that were presented, they were reviewed, and someone checked those out, and you know that?
That is the normal custom-
It is.
... practice with this property management company, and I have no reason to believe they did anything other than the normal custom practice. Thank you.
Is it normal practice for these landlords to let a property manager make their decisions as to who they rent to?
It is normal custom and practice for a property manager to receive the documents. The landowner has the final say-so, but when they're presented with information saying, okay, this looks like a viable tenant, this person has business experience, has assets, and this is what they are agreeing to do. The key here is the term of the lease specifically required a particular use and forbid any sale of drugs, legal or illegal. He agreed to the use that he then violated. He violated the terms of the lease. This landlord, I can promise you, absolutely never would have agreed to lease to anyone for operation of a marijuana dispensary.
I understand. I'm just trying to figure out who decided that these were good tenants. Was it the property manager or the landlord?
I believe the decision was made collectively, but based on the representations made by the prospective tenant. And, you know, every day, people come in and they say, you know, this is what I want to do, and here I've got this, I want to run an animal grooming center, I want to do this, I want to open a restaurant, I want to do these types of things. In, to a certain extent, you trust people to tell you honestly what their intentions are. And when they sign a lease specifically stating, I'm going to operate this pet grooming center in there, you don't expect them to be doing something different.
Does the property manager work for the landlord?
Yes, the property manager is employed by the landlord. They have management agreements. So the property manager is also, when you have a center that has a number of different units, there are always, you know, calls in the middle of the night, somebody's got a plumbing problem, there's some kind of problem with the landscaping, somebody's got, you know, homeless people moving in, we've got to do something about security, we've got, you know, grease interceptors that need to be cleaning, there are all kinds of day-to-day operations that need to be undertaken. The officers of the land-owning corporation, as I mentioned, are two of whom in their 90s and one of whom in her late 80s. I can't imagine them dealing with the middle-of-the-night plumbing emergency. I think not, without reason for them to have property management to rely on, to make care of the operations of the center.
Yeah, I had a question. It's probably a two-part question. When were the actual landlords informed about the illegal operation, and who informed them? Was it the property manager that informed them?
There was a notice that was sent by the city. My recollection, it was the 20th of June, and the notice was sent both to the owners and the property manager. I do know that the email went to property management in the evening, I believe, on the 20th of June, and my office was contacted at 8:30 a.m. on the 21st. There was absolutely no delay from the time that both property management and owners discovered that this is how the tenant was using the property, that the illegal use was happening, and they contacted my office immediately to get them out. We cannot have this happening here. And I served the notice to terminate that very day, to start the process. And, you know, we, and as I said, we went through the process. Yet you have to have the notice and the notice period to run, and then you file the unlawful detainer, get it back from the court, whenever the clerks get it around to giving you the conformed copy, then it's got to go to the process server to go out for service, to serve the named tenant. All of this, you've got to go through those procedures. You cannot possibly evict them until you go through those procedures, which we expedited. We did as quickly as possible.
Is the property manager located on the premises, or where is the property manager located?
The property management has offices, and they visit the premises generally, at least weekly, but they are not resident property managers.
And they are people who have been in this business and have worked with these owners for a long period of time?
Yes.
Because anyone who's aware of the way this works, you would know that when you receive something from someone, if there's a mistake, it's not something that's settled overnight. It's a very complicated process. So one is specifically more careful in this field in general, knowing that if things go wrong, it's not going to be very good, and it's going to be lengthy. So that does put a question mark on the property manager's recommendations or statements to the owner. Obviously, the owner, they've worked together, so it wasn't somebody new, but that certainly is a difficult thing to look at. I guess that's the way I see it, but I don't know all the details at this point.
Well, I think, in this case, I think that people took this prospective tenant at his word with what his intents were for the use, and the fact that he signed a lease that specifically forbid him to do what he then proceeded to do. You know, it's unfortunate that this occurred, but, you know, as I said, once we discovered that that's what was going on, that he had absolutely entirely misled people as to what his intentions were, we wasted no time and took every possible action to expedite his removal, and were successful.
How do you explain success? I guess define that.
They got him out.
I would define that. That's all right. It's over, I get it. That's success, but at any rate, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Noel. Do you have your mic on?
I hate this mic. The expeditious manner in which council handled is, really, I guess, I suppose what we're looking for, were there any red flags coming in? Did he looks apart? Was he straggly, and you probably don't know, was he a coat-and-tie sort of guy that looks like a legitimate businessman?
I have reviewed the assets that he listed, in addition to saying that he had, I believe, well over $200,000 in the bank, but he also described a Rolex watch and some other items that my understanding is, and I have not met the man personally, but my understanding is, he dressed the part of an experienced businessperson.
All right. No red flags that you've ever seen in this?
There weren't, I mean, I guess in retrospect, we'll, and going forward, we'll try to be, you know, more comprehensive about it.
Sure.
But again, with this individual, as I understand it, he does not have a criminal record, it's, you know, you can't see what people are thinking. It's-
And she has, they have other tenants in that building as well?
They do.
And all of them are long-term tenants, most of them.
They have other tenants, well, I will tell you, they also lost one of their long-term tenants-
Because of this?
Who, because of this use.
Okay.
And the tenant asked to be released from his lease, and the landlord agreed to that.
Okay.
The landlord agreed to let the tenant out.
Which tenant was that?
I don't know the name of it. I do know that there was one that they agreed to be released from his lease early because of this neighboring use that they were-
In that shopping center?
Yes, in that shopping center.
All right.
I mean, I can find out what the name of the tenant was, but that's my understanding of one, there was one tenant that was let out of his lease early because of this.
We're entitled, we would look forward to seeing you again, but not in your official capacity as representing anybody that-
Perfectly happy to come back.
Okay, good.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. Any other questions?
No, thank you. We'll discuss this in closed session.
Thank you very much.
While we're in public comments, we do have somebody here from Supervisor Foley's office. Sarah DiAgostino is our new community services representative. Is that your right title?
Yes.
Did you bring business cards with you?
I don't have business cards yet, but I am awaiting them shortly. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Sarah DiAgostino. I am a new district representative for Supervisor Foley's office. I'm going to be overseeing Laguna Woods, as well as Aliso Viejo, a resident in Aliso Viejo, so I'll be local, I'll be around. I just came to introduce myself, and I know I've met you before, Mayor, at the Alignment Health opening, right in the same center. I just came, I wanted to let everyone know that we have our senior summit, which is going to be this Friday. It's going to be an amazing event with a resource fair with over 50 vendors for our seniors. We're doing technology trainings. We are doing a vaccine clinic. We're going to be giving away the flu shot. We'll have panels all day. Just an amazing event for our seniors. I brought some flyers, if there's anywhere that we are able to put them. Yeah, I just wanted to come introduce myself, and I'll be around.
Can you tell us your background that brought you here to Supervisor Foley's office?
Yes, so I grew up in Laguna Niguel. I went to Aliso Niguel High School, and then from there on, I went to Saddleback Community College for two years, in which then I transferred to UC Santa Barbara. I got my bachelor's in sociology. And then I was able to travel after I got my bachelor's, and then after that, I moved back to Orange County, and I was looking for a position in which I can help the community. I'm very, very passionate about community work, very passionate about a lot of the work that Supervisor Foley is doing, so grateful to be a part of the team.
Thank you. So welcome aboard. We look forward to, I assume you'll be dropping by at our regular meetings?
Perfect.
Thank you for coming to our irregular meeting.
Of course, yes.
Question?
Go ahead.
How's the parking going to be? Give me a secret, if I get down there early.
At the senior slot?
Where do we park?
Is there VIP parking?
Right on, right in the parking lot before-
We are going to have, we have a whole lot dedicated to our guests, as well as shuttles, so we're going to have golf carts, shuttling, any guests that may need accommodations. It's a whole parking lot dedicated. There's going to be plenty of signage, plenty of parking, so that should not be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Lot A, I believe, is the dedicated lot. It's going to be right as you enter on your left-hand side.
There's a guard gate right as you go down.
Yeah, so they'll be able, you know, we have, I believe, eight or 10 of our staff members assigned to making sure that the parking is functional and working out, so.
All right.
Yeah, we should have plenty of help with that.
Thank you.
Will you let everyone know what the hours it'll be, too, please?
Yes, of course. So it starts at 8:30 in the morning and concludes at 3:00 p.m.
Did you say Soke University?
Soke University in Aliso Viejo, right off of Wood Canyon. Then, on the flyers, well, we are requiring to sign up prior, just so that we can have a-
Account.
Account, exactly.
Okay, if you give the stack of flyers to the city clerk, we'll be sure to, we'll make extra copies and distribute them here at City Hall.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, now let's move to-
I moved the consent calendar?
Wait a minute, we've got to, first, we have, we still have our presentation on our Capitol quarterly report on our capital plan, capital improvement plan.
Yes, indeed. Let me share my screen real quick.
Did we move the consent calendar? We didn't?
No consent calendar today. We're back to item 4-1. So what we wanted to start doing this year was providing more regular updates for the city council on a variety of different programs, but today we're talking about the capital improvement program. So the idea is that we will provide you with a quarterly overview of where we're at with the projects that we said we would work on or deliver in the current fiscal year. The current capital improvement program, it's an 11-year capital program, was adopted this past June. In the current fiscal year's capital improvement program cadre of projects, there are seven new projects that we were to initiate this current fiscal year, and then five carryover projects, for a total of 12. The CIP itself, we're not anticipating any changes to it at this moment in time, but as we get closer to June, we'll start talking about some proposed modifications for the next 10 years, and we do expect that to be informed by a couple of more notable things. In particular, the pavement management plan for the city, this is the every-other-year year where we update that. And so that process is actually underway. The consultant that we've retained for that did their inspections, I believe, earlier this month or last month, and that should be coming to you in the first quarter of The mobility technology plan that we talked about last meeting, we're still looking at that at the staff level, but there are some technological improvements in the first phase of that that don't require the initiation of a pilot program or anything, but that would be technological improvements that could potentially continue to lay the groundwork for the future use of connected and automated vehicles. We are, and we'll talk about this again in a little bit, but we are continuing to pursue some external funding, whether that's grant funding in the traditional sense, or state budget appropriations for a number of unfunded capital projects. And then one of the things that you'll see that'll be a little bit different, starting with the next iteration of the capital improvement program, we are working on implementing the housing elements requirements, that we prioritize certain capital improvements to sidewalk systems and pedestrian infrastructure based on different socioeconomic and environmental factors. So we will be doing that analysis to couple with the CIP in the future as well. Wanted to run through the 12 projects that we're working on. Some of these are really easy updates, some of them I'm going to spend a little bit more time on, but the first program is the six, Phase 6 and 6B of the ADA Pedestrian Accessibility Project. That project is complete. This is a carryover from last fiscal year. We were able to complete this project in August. Council accepted completion of the project. I believe now we either just received or are in the process of imminently receiving our reimbursement from the County of Orange for those funds expended. That was, as you recall, some curb ramps at Gates 12 and 16, a driveway crossing down by Woods End Wilderness Preserve, and another near what used to be the Las Palmas Assisted Living Facility, and then a variety of sidewalks on both El Toro Road and Molten Parkway. The library project, my brief update on this today is that the concrete repairs are scheduled to begin next week. We expect the contractor to be on site on Monday to begin the process of replacing the damaged concrete panels in front of the building. We anticipate a total of about 1,900 square feet of the concrete work will be replaced. That work should be done in two to three weeks or thereabouts. Once that's done, we will be able to move very quickly to actually opening the library for public use, so stay tuned for that. The EV charging project, as the council is aware, that's also complete. This was another carryover project from last fiscal year that was accepted as complete in July. We brought fees before you in September for that approval. That is now ready to go as soon as the construction fencing comes down from the Public Library Project. The El Toro Road Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project, wanted to talk just a little bit more about this. So this is the project that will construct a new bioswale on Molten Parkway that will pick up some of the transportation-related runoff from Molten Parkway. And then it will also include the installation of a modular wetland unit on El Toro Road just east of Woods End Wilderness Preserve that will pick up some of the runoff from El Toro Road. We have gone through two rounds of competitive bidding on this project. We released one round of the project for bid solicitation in August, ultimately rejected all of those bids due to cost. There was a second round in September. We are anticipating recommending that the City Council reject the results of that round of bidding as well, and we are setting ourselves up to go through a third round of bidding in November, still trying to get that cost down. Long story short, this project should cost somewhere in the ballpark of $200,000, even acknowledging that contractors build in profit and the cost of materials is seemingly ever-increasing. The bids that we have been receiving have been north of a half a million dollars. It's excessive for the type of work that we're talking about. So we're hopeful that that third round of bidding will be more successful. We have a broader distribution list, even though it's broadly distributed in newspapers and plan rooms anyway, we have a broader list of contractors to send it to directly to hopefully drum up some additional interest. But if all goes according to plan, that third round of bidding results in a bid that we can accept, we would anticipate recommending a contract award in December, and then very likely, construction on that project would start, I would guess, sometime in mid-February to the end of February or thereabouts. We do anticipate, though, that just looking at the bids that we've been receiving, that the current funding that's budgeted for this project is unlikely to be sufficient to fund the project through construction. And so when we get bids back, assuming there's a bid that's closer to our target amount, we do anticipate coming back to the council for both a recommendation to award that contract and then a recommendation to move some additional American Rescue Plan Act dollars into that project. But design is complete. We are ready to go on the project just as soon as we find a contractor for it. The Woods End Wilderness Preserve Trail Drainage and Improvement Project, so, and I have a visual that I'm going to show you in a second, but this project, it really seeks to accomplish two things. One, it's looking to resolve some of the nuisance sediment runoff that we experience at the base of the park where it meets up with El Toro Road. And then we also have some monies from the state through a park bond act to make some improvements to the accessibility and the visibility of the trailhead entry system at the base of the park. That park, when it was open to the public, there was very minimal improvements made. We're looking to increase, you know, visibility of it through signage and opening up the front a little bit to make it a little clearer that it is actually a trailhead and not simply a fence with a gap in it that you can walk through and then connect to trails. But that nuisance sediment issue has kind of spiraled into looking at a variety of things, and I think it's probably easiest, let me just, before I move on from this slide, say that we haven't started design because we're still scoping the project, but the state has extended the grant performance period for the state park bond monies that we have. Previously, we had to spend that by the end of June of 2024. They've extended that grant to the end of June 2028. So we have sufficient time, I think, to do this project right and to go through and look at the different due diligence issues we're trying to resolve. So this next screen, this is an aerial image of Woods End Wilderness Preserve. So El Toro Road is on the right of the screen. Avenida Sociega is at the top of the screen. The rooftops that you see are different residences within Laguna Woods Village. And the box at the base of the road that is marked entry, this is where we imagine most of the state-funded improvements would take place. This is where we're talking about improving, you know, some of the signage, maybe some lighting, some landscaping and infrastructure elements at that side. But the piece that we're really focusing on right now is looking at the hydrology and the hydraulics of a detention basin that exists on the site. So I've drawn an arrow there, and it's somewhat hard to see because part of it is overgrown with vegetation, but there is a detention basin built towards the top of the property just, I guess it would be just south of Avenida Sociega, that includes a spillway on the right side for, you know, once the basin fills up, water in some relatively tempered manner was apparently intended to flow across the spillway and then down, some sort of channelization that I think time and erosion has covered up. It's difficult to access this area, so it's entirely possible that there are some hardscape elements under there, but it's not particularly safe or easy to do that. And then there are some drains at the south end of this property, and there's also an underdrain of sorts that drains a very small portion of Avenida Sociega, mostly the road surface, and a very small portion of some landscaped areas. So we have been doing some engineering work on this, trying to figure out what the point of this detention basin is. It, at this point, and I'm going to caveat this by saying it's preliminary, but at this point, from what we can glean, this basin was built for some other purpose that was never ultimately constructed. There was, as some of you may know, a plan once upon a time to develop portions of what's today the Woods End Wilderness Preserve into housing. And so it's possible that this detention basin was either built in anticipation of that housing to handle some of the runoff and drainage from that property, or some other sort of like early iteration, something they were contemplating in the 60s, 70s, or 80s that never came to fruition, but some of the infrastructure was put in the ground for it. It's heavily deteriorated. The spillway is concrete, that's breaking apart and falling apart. There are still some pipes that feed into this detention basin, but it doesn't appear that the detention basin has received much in the way of stormwater at really any point in the recent past. And again, nature has kind of taken over and grown up in a big part of it. So we're looking, again, at the hydrology and the hydraulics of this, trying to figure out if this is necessary for the city to maintain, or if this can be abandoned and some of the hardscape elements removed without having a negative impact on drainage in the area. We've figured out what drains to it. It's largely this undeveloped open space area, which again leads us to believe that there was once upon a time something proposed for that area, or at least contemplated for that area, that they, somebody, I say they, we're not entirely sure who, but somebody constructed this detention basin. We have been unsuccessful in finding much in the way of records. We've done public records requests with a variety of agencies, including the county who presumably would have overseen the permitting for this facility. There's really nothing out there. So we're finishing up some of that work, and we're going to use the outcomes of that engineering study to help scope what this project ultimately ends up looking like. It will for sure include entry improvements, but in a general sense, and consistent with the management plans, the resource management plans for Laguna Coast Wilderness Park, if it's possible for us to remove the unnatural human-made elements in the park, i.e. the spillway and some of the channelization in there, we would most likely propose doing so at this point. The flip side of that is if the detention basin proves to be necessary, there would be a fairly significant amount of work to get it back to a design condition for that basin, especially because the inlet area, and you can kind of see, if you can see where my cursor is, you can kind of see this little gray line over there. There's some inlet infrastructure at the top of it, but it's heavily vegetated, there's a grade change out there. This is not an easy area to work in, which is, I suspect, why it was seemingly built and then walked away from by whoever built it. So we're looking at that, and then obviously, we are looking at using those entry improvements to help stop some of the sediment from running into the street. But I just wanted to walk you through kind of...
When it was, when we had all the heavy rains, what was, what happened there? Did it become mud?
Yeah, so when we had the heavy rains, the, there was sediment washing into El Toro Road, but there was no, like, that detention basin wasn't filling. So there's, you know, what I would say is that most of the drainage area for the detention basin is pervious land.
Is what?
Is pervious. It's mostly this
Right, I get it.
undeveloped area, so it very likely was infiltrating or being caught in depressions and other areas in that property. The amount of paved surface or impervious area that drains to that detention basin is very, very small by comparison. So anyway, we're, we're going to come back to you with a bigger discussion on this, but I wanted to let you know that we're not as far along in this project as we would like to be because we are trying to resolve some of these drainage issues. The last thing any of us want to do is build something that ends up impeding drainage or, you know, we pass up an opportunity to improve some existing condition on the property.
This is the only free land we've got in our city that we're looking at right here. Don't you ever repeat this to anybody out there now? Okay, but this is it. And I keep saying, what could we do with it? If we could, with a magic wand, make a park or something?
It is a park.
It is a park now.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's a park.
It's part of the wilderness.
Yeah, it's a wilderness park.
Well, but it turns into a mud bowl.
No, only briefly.
And only a little piece of it.
I don't see any bodies in there.
You will. Be yours if you keep talking about doing something with it.
I had a quick question.
That wasn't a threat. That was a joke.
Could we maybe put a palm tree in the middle of it?
No, we leave it, we leave it.
I think our intent is to keep it as natural as possible.
I used to hike that up.
Just a real quick question.
Perfect, perfect. What it's for.
That was a great hike, one of the best hikes in Orange County. It was up to that ridge.
I was going to say, wasn't, and looking at this, what part of this belongs, doesn't part of that belong to Third Mutual?
So there's a fence line, if you can, I don't know how well you can see my cursor, but there's a fence line roughly here
Yeah.
that separates the Third Mutual property from the undeveloped property. And then the property line is more or less where the wall is built on the south side of Avenida Sociega. We own 10.6 acres of this area. Pretty much most of what you see here is owned by the city. When you get further to either the west or the north, it transitions into a multitude of different property owners, all of which are either deed restricted for protected open space or outright leased to
Okay.
the County of Orange for inclusion in the Laguna Coast Wilderness Park.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So we'll, more on this to come, but that's just what we're looking at right now.
Oh, let me just interject for a minute. The city acquired this property with park funds from the state in order to lease it to the Laguna Coast Wilderness Area to become part of the park. So if we wanted to take it out of the park, we would have to pay back the state and break the lease and get action by the state legislature.
Please don't make me unwind another set of park.
And that includes, that's, that includes planting a palm tree, so that's why we can't do that.
Yes, we are
And we don't want to.
limited by what we're doing, but yes, please do not ask staff to unwind another set of deed restrictions on parkland.
There's wildlife there, too.
There's lots of wildlife there. Shifting gears to current year projects, so these are projects that we've started since July. ADA Phase 7, this includes a driveway, reconstructing a driveway crossing on El Toro at the Presbyterian Church, and then a variety of sidewalk panels on eastbound El Toro past Tannager. We have been working on this project pretty much since July 1st. The first order of business for us was to, obviously, initiate design, but start the process of obtaining a temporary construction easement for the work adjacent to Geneva Presbyterian Church. If you recall, we hit a delay in Phase 6 and 6B, trying to get a temporary construction easement from the Arco AMPM property to be able to do a driveway crossing that passes by their property. We were ultimately unsuccessful in obtaining that easement, so we had to move on to other work. In this case, Geneva Presbyterian was very supportive of the work. The temporary construction easement is only necessary for our contractor to work from the Geneva Presbyterian side of the project area. The sidewalk and the driveway crossing itself all exists within the city's property, but we have to reconstruct a portion of their asphalt area to meet up with the new line and grade of the reconstructed driveway crossing. So by September 25th, we had that temporary construction easement secured. Geneva Presbyterian has actually already signed the temporary construction easement, so when we bring this project to council to award a contract for construction, which we hope will be at the November meeting, your next meeting, our recommendation would be two-part. It would be to award that contract and also to approve the execution of that temporary construction easement. We are currently out to bid on this project. Bids are due next week on November 2nd. We've never had, and knock on wood, but historically, we've never had an issue receiving competitive market rate bids for either the ADA project or the pavement management project. So we are cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to recommend a word of a contract in November, and then very likely, because of the holidays, I would say that construction is probably most likely to begin in January or thereabouts. Likewise, the next iteration of the Pavement Management Plan project on westbound El Toro between Canyon Ren and Tannager, that is also out for bid. It's also due on November 2nd, and we also anticipate bringing that contract before you at your next meeting. This is a strange one. I wanted to spend a little bit more time on this, hence the picture. So another project for this year, we had talked about, we have a storm drain that crosses under Ridge Route Drive from the city's kind of landscape area, Parkway area, under the street, it daylights on the Laguna Hillside above the reservoir, and then seemingly just drops water into the reservoir. We got on this project because there is heavy deterioration around the pipe. It's inundated with dirt. The catch basin that existed on our side has more or less collapsed, so we know we need to do something to it. We, in June, we ran CCTV through the pipe to try to figure out what exactly was happening. It's a steel pipe, which is what you see on the right there. That's a screenshot from, I believe it's a 42-inch pipe.
That's large.
It's big, yeah. And so the pipe itself, there's a variety of things wrong with it, but the strangest by far is if you look at this picture, and I realize it's a little grainy, but where my cursor is here, that is a brick and mortar wall built in the pipe. So water flows in, carries sediment with it, hits the wall, doesn't go anywhere. The other side of the pipe is open and has a T-type connection from Laguna Hillside, but for whatever reason, the flow from the Laguna Woods side into the pipe stops at this wall. Very strange. There's no record that we can find of who might have built it, why they might have built it, when they might have built it, anything like that. But obviously, this probably greatly contributed to the deterioration of the pipe by causing water to stand in place in the pipe and sediment to fill the pipe over time. So that's a curiosity about this project, which is certainly strange. We are working with engineers to, again, look at the hydrology and the hydraulics of this area. We are attempting to ascertain what the best path forward is here. Very likely, it involves Laguna Hills. We've been keeping them apprised of this issue as well. It obviously runs under their vehicle travel lanes. The, the pipe itself is at a low point on Ridge Route. It does currently collect drainage primarily from the village's golf course.
Yes.
But again, because that's mostly a pervious surface, in practice, there really hasn't been a ton of rainwater directed here, and especially because this has obviously been plugged up for seemingly decades, we've never experienced flooding or the level of inundation that you would expect if there was a significant amount of water flowing to this point during rain events. So not wanting to create a solution bigger than the problem, we have started off by trying to identify what the options are for making sure that that water has somewhere to go, right? We can't ignore that there's 28 acres of property draining to a low point.
Is this west of Clubhouse 4?
It's, yes, it is. I had to get my bearings there, yes. It's west of Clubhouse 4.
There, see, the water does swell down in there, and it does go to the other side, which has, is a huge reservoir that takes it even under Molten further down.
And I think part of what's happening
It's a huge amount of water.
is surface flowing over the road. It's getting over the road and dropping down. I think there is another catch basin further east that's carrying I think there is another catch basin further east that's carrying some of the water, and that catch basin, I believe, is what connects to the other side of this wall.
I thought that was El Toro's waters.
No, this one is.
Not this one, but the other one.
The other one might be. It intersects with this drain on the other side of that plugged wall, and then if you can imagine where it hits this pipe, it then takes a right turn and dumps itself above the V reservoir and then flows down. So, long story short, like-for-like replacement is the most expensive solution here. It is not an inexpensive proposition to rebuild this pipe and the catch basin on the city side. So we're currently looking at whether there is something we can do. We have a pretty wide Parkway area in this area, right? We have the decomposed granite sidewalk, and then we have vegetated, there's a swale, there's just planter areas. We're looking at whether we can do something with infiltration and detention of the water that would allow us to handle it a little more naturally rather than putting steel pipes in the ground and doing things like that. But we do have four other alternatives that involve regrading portions of the roadway surface, adding curbs and gutters. We're looking at a variety of things, all of which are less expensive than untangling this. So we, this is another one that will come back to you, but I wanted to give you a sense of where the engineering analysis is now. We're just trying to not, in a perfect world, we find a way to do something that doesn't involve tearing open the road, excavating, I mean, like you said, Councilmember Moore, this is a big pipe. It's not a cheap thing to just drop something in or reline it or something like that. So, anyway, we are working on this. I suspect we'll probably come back to you with an update. I would guess probably first quarter of 2024 we'll have more of a sense of where to go on this, but we haven't obviously initiated any sort of design until we figure out what exactly the right scope is here. The El Toro Median Improvement Project, so this is the project to relandscaped the two medians between Caix Nora and Molton Parkway on El Toro Road. You approved the conceptual design in August. We moved from that point into developing the final design documents. Those are done. We are anticipating putting this out to bid in November, potentially as early as next week, and then we anticipate making a contract award recommendation to the council in December. This note should also say "Design Complete," "Pre-Design Is Done." City Hall Phase Four, this is our refurbishment and safety project. This project includes a variety of work on primarily the second floor related to doors and windows, both on the balcony area and in stairwells, and then replacement of the balcony railing on the second floor. We are amending the scope to replace and redesign the air conditioning system for this room and the AV control room behind us. I think today was a good instructive example of that, that we came in today and the HVAC system was not working. They were apparently able to do something to it to bring it back to life, however temporarily, but we'll be not replacing like-for-like on that. Our intent is recognizing that this building was not designed as a city hall. This gives us an opportunity, because the system is so self-contained, right now, the unit that's failing feeds only this room and the control room. It gives us a very good opportunity to redesign the airflow and air quality in this room and in that room with a new system that is sized correctly, and then with ductwork and returns and whatnot that actually are appropriate for the space. Obviously, when this was a bank, this room was used very different than we're using it right now, so it just gives us an opportunity to bring that up to date. So we are in the design, pre-design, the architect has started working on the design documents, but especially with the HVAC piece of it, there's still some exploratory work that's taking place as well, but we were able to begin that in July. Phase Five of the City Hall project, this is the first floor remodel. This is the broader, like, everything on the other side of the wall with the screen, remodeling the office space, the lobby space, the public use spaces, conference room, et cetera. The conceptual design for that was completed last year. We are planning to bring that plus a design contract recommendation to you as early as your next meeting, that is our goal. That process is going to take a little bit of time, but at a high level, it seeks to make the city hall experience infinitely more pleasant and user-friendly for residents with accessible seating areas, with sufficient space for staff to work out of rather than the kind of congestion that you see in that area of the office right now. It also seeks to move the drop-off services for waste and recycling programs that operate out of City Hall into a dedicated space for it so that we don't have staff working next to Sharp's disposal box and another box filled with small electronics and shredding and all of that. So it's a more logical floor plan that I think gives us plenty of room to, you know, grow into and makes better use of the space. Again, there were limited improvements undertaken with this building when the city acquired and moved into it. This is the first opportunity to really turn it into something that works for staff, and the benefit is that now having been in this building for 20 years, 21, having been in this building for 21 years, we have a pretty good sense of what we need and what residents need. I'll just give you a simple example. The fact that we have a standing-only counter is less than ideal for really all parties involved, and so one of the things in the conceptual design that you'll see is a counter that transitions from being 100% standing to 100% seated, with, again, accessible seating areas for residents who might visit City Hall in walkers or wheelchairs and that sort of thing. So we'll hopefully reconvene on this subject at your next meeting, if not the meeting after that, probably. And then the last current year project, the City Hall Parking Lot Improvement Project, so this is repaving the parking lot, leveling out some of the grade changes. There's a lot of broken concrete out there, and then also adding some additional trees in the parking lot area. This project is, pre-design is underway, we are pretty much done with that. We did a topographic survey of the property to make sure that we could get the grades and elevations that we wanted. That was completed in September. We are planning to use our civil engineering firm for this work. The reason there's an anticipated design contract there, the civil engineering contract would ordinarily be able to accommodate this work, but it's set to end at the end of December. We're going to be going through a competitive RFP process to select a firm for city engineering services starting January 1st. So we want to get this project going. We plan to award a one-off contract to the existing firm to be able to start it. They're the ones that have been doing the pre-
Start with in January, but not with this, is that what you just said?
Oh, no, no, so we're planning to come to you at your next meeting with a contract for the existing engineers to be able to start work on it. That way, if they find themselves not the recipient of the city engineering contract in January, they can still finish the project just under a separate agreement, so.
How long is that project then?
It's not going to be short. The engineering part of it, the design part, is probably another, I'm going to say, five months of work, and then when we get to bidding, that's anybody's guess how long that takes, but I would say that the project itself, when we get to construction, probably won't take all that long. It is a pretty straightforward project, it's just complicated. If you've ever walked out there, you know that there's so many conflicting grades that trying to level it out is an exercise in art, as far as I'm concerned, but the construction of it will probably take, I'm going to guess, three months, maybe, somewhere in that ballpark. So, anyway, we're hoping to get a start on that starting next month. They're ready to go on it. We were going back and forth on the proposal for those services to make sure that we had the scope correct and they understood what we were trying to accomplish. So we're at that point. They also did that topographic survey so that we would have the pieces in place to be able to start design immediately upon that construction or that contract being awarded. And with that, just one last thing, I wanted to note that we are seeking external funding for a variety of projects in the CIP. These are all as listed in the CIP, but, you know, looking for additional EV charging monies, emergency generator monies. City Hall Refurbishment Project Phase Six is just the next phase in a continuing process of trying to bring this building up to date. The El Toro Road Localized Flooding Relief Project, which has to do with drainage conditions at the Avenue de Sevilla, Gates One and Five intersection with El Toro Road, median improvements on Santa Maria, and then a general addition of trees to the city. These are all projects that as we start talking to state legislators about their budget requests for the next legislative session, we'll be talking to them about these projects, and then as we start looking at grant funding, and there are a couple that we're, we already have our eye on, there's CAL FIRE money related to tree planting and urban greening, and then there's active transportation dollars that we'll probably use, seek initially to develop an active transportation plan, which is usually a precursor to being able to obtain active transportation grants, but this is some of the stuff that we're working on on the side of the projects that we're actually working to put in the ground to try to bring other monies to the table before we get into the next budget process. That's it on this item. Any questions?
I had a comment on Phase Five.
Yes.
Phase Five is the, I, it's troubling to me, it's been a very long time, and I feel like we have employees who are not in the, not only not a pleasant situation, I feel like they're in a very awkward situation where they're very crowded, they have no space, they can hear, it's difficult to work, it would be very distracting to work in that environment, I believe, and to have that change, to me, is really important, because I, when you have people working for you, they come first in your, you want, you want everything to look nice, but your employees, obviously, we have expectations for them to produce things, and you can't have expectations when you don't produce, provide the proper environment, and I have to tell you, that is very troubling to me, to see this situation the way it is. I just, I feel really not happy about it.
We feel, so Yoli, April, and I in particular have been working on this project for a little while, and I think the, the design that we'll walk you through at hopefully your next meeting accomplishes all of that and more. I mean, we are ultimately still hemmed in by a strange-shaped building with odd dimensions and angles, but I think that having the opportunity, what we did is we looked at it as it's, that part of the building is scraped, right? It's, it's an open plain, how would we lay it out so that employees have that work environment you talked about, and members of the public come in and have a place to sit that's not in somebody else's walkway? They have, when they need to get something notarized, when they need to talk to us about something that might be sensitive to them, they have an actual place to talk to us about it that isn't standing at a counter two feet away from people sitting behind them. And so it took a lot of massaging to try, again, there's weird angles in this building that make it very difficult to do things, but I think you'll be pleased with what we've come up with. We vetted it through staff to make sure that we weren't doing something that was going to create just a different kind of problem, and I do think that it accomplishes some of the things, you know, for instance, our building employees, building meaning building, permitting and so forth, they still favor a collaborative working space where they're not, you know, they don't want to be in individual offices locked away from each other. The nature of their work is that they do talk back and forth a lot, but if you've walked in our back office area right now, I mean, one of them is essentially occupying a desk that is sitting in a hallway, right? It's not a, it's not a workspace, and so you'll see that there's individual, you know, cubicle modular workstations, but they are, in the case of the building staff, they are still collaborative, but there's also a spot that someone can call their own. So we'll go through that at the next meeting, but I appreciate the points. I mean, we completely agree with you that it's a long overdue to give that part of the office a ground-up refresh.
Is there anything being considered about upstairs?
Yeah, so the upstairs is a good point. We wanted to get through the first floor remodel. Part of what we were concerned about is what we would be able to fit on the first floor versus what might need to move up to the second floor, so we wanted to have a sense of what that first floor remodel looked like. The, long and the short of it is, I suspect that Phase Six of the project will be a, not nearly this extensive, but a version of looking at the upstairs, because there are some, like, storage elements that we're going to need to move upstairs.
But that has a ceiling problem, doesn't it?
Yeah, so I neglected to mention that, but one of the other things in Phase Five, because, so that, that project is going to require us to vacate that bottom office area, right? There's no way for us to really effectively work around it during construction. When we do that, we have a unique opportunity to reinforce the currently underbuilt portion of the second floor, so there's an L-shaped attic on the second floor that sits immediately above this building, so it runs from the AV area straight across to the vault, then makes a left turn and runs straight across to on top of the conference room. That portion of the building is not built out for live loads on the floor. When we have this building torn apart to do the first floor work-
Can it be storage or weight?
That's even more load than the live load, yeah. So when we have it torn apart, the idea is that we'll do the structural reinforcement to give us the ability to use that space in the future. While we have everything torn apart, best time to do it as opposed to tearing it apart, moving staff back in, deciding we want it, having to move out again, redo it, tear up what we just did, so we have that included in Phase Five as well. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, that was very comprehensive. We have no consent calendar today. We have nobody here for public comments today. We have no public hearings today, but we do have an item of city council business, item 8.1, having to do with City of Laguna Hills Traffic Signal Program that's going to offer us some benefits.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate everyone taking the time for today's meeting. This is the item that was time-sensitive that we really needed to address today. This item, let me just make a note here real quick, this item came about by way of the City of Laguna Hills. They reached out to staff in September to discuss, engage our interest in whether we were amenable to going in with them on a regional traffic signal synchronization grant funding application for monies available through Measure M2. These are monies administered by the Orange County Transportation Authority. In looking at it, that Project P, the Regional Traffic Signal Synchronization Grant, it's primarily intended to coordinate traffic signals across cities, places a high emphasis on multi-jurisdictional collaboration, but it's also available to fund operational and maintenance improvements related to traffic signals and traffic control. So in this 2024 Call for Projects, OCTA has approximately $45 million available. It's split between two projects. It's split between this Project P, but also Project O, which is their regional capacity program that deals with improvements to streets that appear on the master plan of arterial highways. There's not a specific number for each project, just 45 million over the course of these two programs. The application deadline is tomorrow at 5 o'clock. We have been working as hard as we can to get this before you, but we had some delays in getting cost estimate information and some of the information that we needed from OCTA and the City of Laguna Hills. If awarded funding, funding would be available in July, so this is a fiscal year 2425 project. I wanted to show you, and this was the best visual we could find to give you a sense of the project area. If you look at the lower-left corner of this, you'll see a star that says City Hall next to it, that's where we are right now, so that's Laguna Woods City Hall. The overall project area inclusive of Laguna Hills and Laguna Woods is the area shown in red, and then the areas shown in the dashed lines kind of towards the middle here on Molton and El Toro Road, that's the City of Laguna Woods project area. So those five black boxes, I think they're actually dark blue, but those five dark boxes, those are the five signalized intersections that we're talking about today, and then the other ones, the numbered ones in the red circles are Laguna Hills. So the, the overall- So the, the overall project area starts at Lake Forest Drive and Molton Parkway. It continues south to the Molton and El Toro intersection, again by the star here. And then at that point, it turns and goes east along El Toro Road up until, I believe it's Carlotta and El Toro Road. And then it picks up a piece of Paseo de Valencia from the intersection with El Toro Road, all the way south to the intersection with Clarrington. So there's a total of 15 signalized intersections in this project, of which five of them are the City of Laguna Woods. One of the requirements for OCTA is that grant applications include contiguous project areas. And so just candidly, for Laguna Hills to do what they want to do on the piece of Molton Parkway that they operate, the only way for them to connect to that is by swinging through Laguna Woods. So they need to pick up our five signalized intersections in order to link up their portion of Molton Parkway with their portion of El Toro Road and their portion of Paseo de Valencia. At these five signalized intersections, we're talking about doing, and I'm only going to talk about the Laguna Woods piece of this project today. The Laguna Hills project is similar, but more involved. They're, one of the things that they highlighted for their city council was that they're one of the only cities in Orange County that doesn't have battery backups at all of their traffic signals. And so they're doing things like installing battery backups. We already have battery backups, there's no need to replace them, and so those stay the way that they are. But they're, generally speaking, think of the workload for Laguna Hills as being what I talk about today for Laguna Woods plus some.
Chris, would this also add cameras?
It's, it wouldn't add cameras-
And I'm not talking about cam, well, I'm thinking about them in general as safety in addition to being trapped.
Sure. So it wouldn't add CCTV cameras, which is what you're talking about, at the five intersections in Laguna Woods. I believe that at least some of the intersections in Laguna Hills, they're proposing to add CCTV cameras to. Those are cameras that, generally speaking, record a continuous stream at an intersection and then retain the data for some period of time. We don't have, we have the ability to look at our intersections through our video detection equipment, but it doesn't save any of the footage. So we can stream it in real time, but we can't go back in time with it.
Okay, what, I'm bringing this up, I had a couple of things here, and I'm sorry-
Sure, no, go ahead.
That one is one, because that's a, becoming a greater, what do I want to say, source of information when we're trying to aid in helping someone, whether they're kidnapped or whatever, that those cameras are, they're critical now. And they play a very big part, and I would think they should be a part of the safety in our community.
Yeah, so I-
I'm not thinking of traffic observation as much as safety.
As what happens, yeah. So I don't actually disagree with it. I will say that part of our hesitancy in adding them, well, really, there's, there's two things. This project would allow us in the future to add CCTV cameras because we would have fiber optic cabling between the signals, which is really what's necessary to get any sort of clear picture quality from them. I understood in the past, and maybe this is just a sensitivity on staff's side from the red light camera era, but I understood there to be some sensitivity, at least among councils in the past, about video recording at intersections. I tend to agree with Councilmember Moore that I don't have a problem with us having the footage, and especially when things happen in, in intersections or crosswalks or whatever, it's not a bad idea. And a lot of cities are also going to, the acronym is ALP, Automated License Plate Detection, I think, but it's a, they run license plates as they cross through, and it allows people to, you know, allows the sheriff-
And they can document that's a stolen vehicle or something, oh wow, that's helpful.
Exactly. So I, if there's some interest in exploring those, I'm happy to bring those back to you in the future and talk about them. I don't think they're bad ideas at all. They're not a part of this project, but this project does set you up to be able to do those if you wanted to. Sets you up to be able to do a lot if you wanted to. And that's, I think, probably the biggest benefit of these improvements. Right now, all of our traffic signals are connected by copper cable, which is not unusual. I mean, that, that is a conventional cabling hookup. Fiber optic cables, the biggest single benefit is they carry more data. The bandwidth is vastly different, and so as we start talking about running things like video footage, or license plate detection, or whatever else over those cables, fiber optic cables allow you to do it, whereas even if a copper cable might allow you to do it, the more data you put across a limited capacity cable, the worse quality everything gets. Yeah.
Is there a clearinghouse for, if you're going to, you have plans to do some trenching, is there a clearinghouse for that so that someone else says, oh, we have, we have to replace a, I don't know, a box or something else, so that you're aware, and this could be, what do I want to say?
Coordinated.
Coordinated better, so that we, somebody does a trench, then they're all up, and then somebody comes along and re-trenches. Is there a clearinghouse?
There, there isn't. It'd be great if there was, because that is a pet peeve.
Why can't the OCTA be the clearinghouse for this, that you would go to a website and see, okay, for the next year or six months or something, because I don't think you trench overnight, you, you have plans for it and so forth. The reason I'm saying this, I happened to be at El Toro's meeting, as I am always, and I listened to them, they were going to replace a lift station, and I thought, gee, that's right where you're talking. Oh, pardon me, I did turn on.
They were going to replace a lift station, and I realized, wow, that's right where you were, we were, I already answered all those questions on this, and I thought, is that possible, that you, you could coordinate that?
I like the idea.
Anyway, something to, I would think OCTA would be the clearinghouse for that. What do you think?
Yeah.
A website that they would maintain.
Somebody should, yeah. I mean, it's, it is definitely a pet peeve. A lot of cities, what they'll do to keep that from happening is like, if they go through and repave a segment of the road-
Right.
-the city will adopt a moratorium, keeping people from trenching it up, which only sort of works because there are some agencies that get the ability to trench regardless.
Well, if you have to replace the lift station-
And that's, that's where it gets hard to say no, right? It's like, it's, maybe if it's elective trenching, but a lot of trenching, given the nature of what's buried under public roads, is not so elective, so, but yeah, I mean, it's a good point. In addition to the fiber optic cabling and some of the equipment that goes along with that, one of the other things that this would allow us to do, we have two traffic signal cabinets. Those are the big, depending on where you're at in the city, they're either big stainless steel boxes or big painted boxes that house our traffic signal controllers and some of the various equipment associated with it. We have two cabinets right now that are damaged. This will allow us to replace those cabinets. And then traffic signal controllers, this kind of goes along with the fiber optic piece of it, that great wiring is only as good as what's then connected to it, right? You plug in old things to new wires, you don't get the benefits of the new wires. So every intersection has a traffic signal controller. We are proposing in this project to update the five traffic signal controllers at these five signalized intersections to be a much more current model. I don't, I don't mean to mislead anybody, like, it's not unusual for traffic signal equipment to be older. It is typically the kind of thing that, you know, cities put in and write it to the end. But this grant provides an opportunity for us to upgrade those as well, which, among other things, and I go through these in greater detail in the agenda report, but there's a whole host of benefits to these type of improvements, not the least of which is that future buildout capacity that as we've talked in this room about setting ourselves up for connected vehicles, automated vehicles, other types of emerging technologies. Without a doubt, every single one of those is going to be, is going to require us to have bandwidth that we don't currently have. So fiber optic cables are an investment in the future with some recognition that what that future is still TBD, but it does get us on that road. There are also things that like the new modernized controllers will allow our traffic engineers to do, to control those intersections and to be more responsive to conditions in those intersections, that the older school controllers just simply don't have the functionality. So they've given us a list of like enabling dynamic traffic signal timing adjustments and being able to transfer data in real time between the signals and the traffic management system. In a lot of cases, if we, if we get a complaint about the way that a intersection is working, there's some information that we can pull off of the traffic server for it, but there's other information that our traffic engineers actually have to go to the cabinet in the field, open it up, and download data from it, because it isn't synced with everything else. These controllers will get us out of that business, and they'll be able to have not only all of that information, but way more information about how that intersection is functioning at their fingertips, which will make their ability to respond to complaints about timing and so forth way easier. You want to ask a question?
I had a marvelous experience the other day. I came out of Gate Nine.
Oh, you're on, you're just not close enough to it. Push it again.
I came out of Gate Nine, came in, and the signal on the entrance into the community center was go. I came down here, it was go. I went all the way down to the freeway, and it was go all the way.
How nice. A first.
I mean, I literally felt I had died and gone to heaven. That happened to me twice, I think, in the 20-some years I've lived here. The usual situation is you come out of there and then you stop.
Were they always on a Thursday?
Is this system going to impact that at all? Or is it going to start saying, look, there's no traffic?
So, yes, I mean-
How does it work?
Without getting into the weeds about it, yes. The system will allow programming that is more responsive and more dynamic than what currently exists. But a portion of this project includes, because it is a traffic signal synchronization grant, it does include timing analysis of the, that whole stretch, so all the way from Molton and Lake Forest down to Valencia and Carrington or Carringwood, wherever it was. It will look at signal timing along those streets and attempt to get you to that remarkable experience of being able to move quickly in one direction. We're not obligated to meet, we're not obligated to implement those timing adjustments, but it will give us at a minimum data points to look at to figure out where things could maybe be improved. I am cautious when it comes to traffic signal synchronization because it is very much the type of thing that, as much as you have an experience where maybe you never get that experience, someone is getting that experience. If it's, if you're hitting red all the way, somebody else is hitting green all the way, right? So I am always leery of changing one thing over here, which messes something up over here, but through this project, if we pursue it, we would be working with Laguna Hills to do that timing analysis and see if there is something that might leave everybody in a better situation.
Speaking to each other again, how about the left turn lane from Molton onto El Toro? That is not a very long time. People start moving rapidly so they can beat the yellow light.
Yeah, so again, without getting into the weeds, part of the issue, especially at Molton and El Toro, because it's a bigger intersection, more people are sitting on red lights than at other intersections. And then, not to throw the Fire Authority under the bus, but with Station 22 existing on one side of the intersection, every time they cross that intersection, the timing is thrown off. And then because it's a big intersection, it takes a very long time for it to reset itself. So if they come back through it, or go a different direction through it, it's thrown off again, right?
Like putting a garage door up and down a white line on it.
So one of the other potential things that will help is if the city elects to move forward with the construction of Fire Station 12 at the city center park site, presumably that will mean that fewer fire apparatus will cross the Molton and El Toro intersection because they will be able to make the left turn out of the fire station and proceed up to Santa Maria. The fewer times our friends at OCFA cross that intersection, the better intersection performance I can give you.
And this one will stop too, because you don't want people traveling north.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be fascinating life.
So the project as a whole, our portion of the project, I think Laguna Hills' portion is over a million dollars, but our portion of the project, we've estimated the work at just under $550,000. The way this grant works, OCTA pays 80% of it, the city pays 20% of it. The way we've talked about it with Laguna Hills is they would pay 20% on their part of the work, which is a different scope entirely, and we would pay 20% on our portion. So we would be on the hook for $110,000. So we would basically spend $110,000 to get $550,000 of benefit.
Do you want to motion?
I recommend it.
Give me just one second.
You have to read the rules.
I have to, if we get the grant, which we would know in April or thereabouts, I would come back to you at that point to talk about where that match comes from, but I want to assure you that we have a variety of funds that have that money in it. We have a cost estimate that's in your packet as well, and then one of the big benefits here, just because as you saw with our capital program, for instance, we've got a lot on our plate already, the fact that Laguna Hills would serve as the lead agency on this grant is a big value add for us. They would handle most of that grant administration piece of it, they would handle the bidding process, all of that. So our involvement in this, while not insignificant, is definitely way less than it would be if we were the lead agency on it.
So their contractors will be our contractors as well?
Yes, correct.
Actually, that's not a cost. If you look at the $109,000, if you're taking that from a fund that you can't use for anything else, then basically I don't see how you call that a cost, because it's not available or something. It's not like it's a reserve.
One of the funds I have listed up there is the General Fund. You could technically take it from your General Fund.
Why would one do that when?
And that's what, my likelihood is that I will come back and recommend that you pull it probably in part from fuel tax and in part from Measure M2, funds that, to your point, are set up exactly for this purpose.
They can be used only for that.
We do use them for other things, that's why I haven't committed anything here, because we need to look at what we, what we anticipate spending, but yes, they're, they're limited to that. So this is a good use of that money, and especially like we can match, so this is Measure M2 money, right? We can match M2 with M2. So that's also a pleasant happenstance. Our recommendation, which I will read for the record, is to approve the city's participation in the City of Laguna Hills' application for grant funding from the Orange County Transportation Authority's Regional Traffic Signal Synchronization Program, Project P, for the Paseo de Valencia-Molton Parkway Confluence Bypass Corridor project, including traffic signal related improvements for portions of El Toro Road and Molton Parkway within the City of Laguna Woods that, if funding is awarded, would require expenditures equal to 20% of those improvement costs, 80% would be funded by the grant, estimated at $109,945.50, and to adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Approving the Submittal of a Grant Application to the Orange County Transportation Authority for Funding Under the Comprehensive Transportation Funding Programs and Making Related Authorizations." The floor is yours.
Who would like to move the recommended act?
I move, we approve the recommendation and the participation and adopt the resolution title as displayed.
Second.
Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay, now we come to city council reports and comments. I'm just going to make this short and sweet. Has anybody attended a meeting of any type in the past week that they would like to report on?
I'd like to, I'd like to tell when someone shares through what happened on Sunday.
Okay.
I didn't want to report on that. I mean, we can, I'll let any report on that. I wanted to report that we've had our first non-travel related dengue fever here in Los Angeles. It's not here in Orange County, but it's not travel related. We have all the mosquitoes here now that are equipped to transfer almost any disease you could acquire overseas, but so-
Somebody who lives here and has stayed here got bit by a mosquito who bit somebody formerly who was traveling.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I just wanted to report that, so look around, empty any water around your place and watch your screens.
Yes.
Most of you have been to where I go to church on Crystal Creek Road off of El Toro.
Keep your mic. Yeah, just lean forward a little more, lean in a little.
And where you go up the hill, and then you go down to whatever that street is in the church.
Since, thank you.
Laguna Hills Drive.
Yeah, and the church sits in the pocket. So Sally usually goes to church before I do because she likes to save a particular seed, and so I come. Last Sunday, I drove up the hill, went over the top, started down toward, make the U-turn to come in. There were three fire engines sitting on the curb, right in front of that driveway that goes down into the church. I made the U-turn, came back, drove up and down in, and there were scores of people standing in front of the-
standing in front of the church, I mean, small children and moms and dads and everybody. And there was, there were two hook-and-letter trucks, the big babies sitting there, and miscellaneous various incendiary fire trucks and vehicles. So I pulled into the parking area, which had no parking in there, and found the commander's little truck that's up there where the battalion chief was doing whatever he was doing, went up and talked to him. And what had happened is that on the second floor of the building, something had gone amiss and had broken and started smoking. And so the second floor, where all the little people go to Sunday school and all that, the smoke started to drift around and that sort of thing, which the chief said that automatically created an alarm in the building. So the alarm's going off in the building, and when that happened, when the alarm went off, then it notified through whatever process, the fire department. So they responded, but in minutes, to get there from 22, which is ours, and another, I don't know whether Laguna Niguel came or whoever, or at least OVA operation came. So by now, there were hundreds of people in the back and just wandering around, wondering what they do, and the fireman, the chief is up there doing his thing, and the firemen are going in and out of the building in their full gear and the whole thing. So the end result is that they got upstairs and found a room where the malfunction that occurred and where the smoke was coming from, and all the meetings were canceled, canceled, so we all went home, and I went home feeling really good about the fire authority and how quickly they respond, and no matter. And the thing that occurred to me, they must somehow realize the size of the building and the number of people in the day, because we had two, I guess what, when your mom's building burned, that was a five alarm, wasn't it, ultimately? So I figured-
The tree caught on fire too.
Yeah, so I figured at least we've got a two-alarm fire out of it, but anyway. So that's my report on the fire authority for today.
Good to know the fire authority's on the job. That concludes our agenda items. We do have a closed session meeting planned. Council, will you take us into closed session, please?
I can. The council will meet in closed session under the authority of California Government Code Section 54956.9A to confer with or receive legal advice from its legal counsel regarding pending litigation for one case, that is City of Laguna Woods versus Kenneth Fexiasing et al., Orange County Superior Court Case Number 30202301341696.
Thank you. Okay, we are recessed into closed session, and we will reconvene when we are done. The council has concluded its closed session and is now back in regular session. Go ahead, council.
The council met in closed session under the authority of California Government Code Section 54956.9A to confer with or receive advice from its legal counsel regarding pending litigation in one case. That case was City of Laguna Woods versus Kenneth Fexiasing et al., Orange County Superior Court Case Number 30202301341696, and we have no reportable action.
Thank you. The adjourners apply to the court. Till our next regular meeting on the third-
November 15.
On November 15 at 2:00 here in City Hall.
Thank you, everybody.